Okay. The East Fishco Planning Board meeting will come to order. May I have a roll call?
John Eichman.
Ed Miyoshi.
Steve Caswell.
Michael O'Brien.
Christopher Tabalonas.
Craig Smith. If you all join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we have the upcoming meeting dates are May 21st and June 18th. Next item is we have the approval of the minutes. I believe we have a quorum here. While Jason is not here, I am here. Greg, let's deal first with the February 19th minutes. Craig, Steve, John, and Ed were here. Have you guys had ample opportunity to review the minutes?
Yes, had some approval.
Do I have a motion?
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the minutes are approved. The March 19th minutes were myself, Steve, John, Ed, and Chris. Have you all had an opportunity to review?
Yes.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, which reminds me, I forgot to introduce, we actually have, our two alternates are seated tonight. Ed Miyoshi is sitting in for, actually for me, I'm sitting in for Lori. And Chris Tabalonas is sitting in for John Cutler. Okay, so the first item on the agenda is decision for Taylor Ray, which is an amended site plan originally received in January 2019. So, Brian, do you want to update us on what's happened with the project since last we saw you?
Yep, we had a chance to run out to the site with Michelle, and we identified tree locations and where they should go. They're going to follow basically the same pattern that we discussed at the last meeting, which was a couple of spot trees along the Teconic State Parkway. There's two trees that are in some poor condition. We're going to replace those. And then we walked the site on that side and we determined there's going to be three or four more trees we're going to plant on the, during the Teconic side toward the covered bridge side, doing a staggered pattern of pine trees as we showed. I think we came up with six or seven trees in that location and they were satisfied with that approach. As recently as today, we had contact with the Board of Health. They actually, the applicant actually submitted an application to expand into the vacant unit. It's a dental expansion, and they're actually using waterless chairs. So the Health Department actually granted approval back in July, and we forwarded that correspondence to Pam, so she should have that on record. So that should satisfy the Health Department concerns. And reaching out to Pete Sataro today, and we spoke about the drainage report. He seems to be, his office seems to be okay with the report that we provided, that size, the drywall, infiltrators that we are going to go into the new parking lot area. So I think just a couple dot the i's, cross the t's with the Engineering Department, the Town Engineering Department with Rick Witt. Couple of notes we're going to add on the plan, and that should be it.
Okay. By the way, for those who are not familiar, basically this is their additional four chairs being added to the dentist's office, and six spots are being removed that were abutting on the buffer for the Teconic and 14 more added by, so again, when I talked to Pete, there were no issues outstanding that he said we shouldn't hold this up. So David, any other comments that?
No additional comments at this time. I know Michelle, the town planner, did have comments, and I concur with her comments. I assume that they've been satisfied.
Yep.
Any comments by board members before we proceed to vote?
No.
Okay, does someone want to offer the resolution?
I will. Resolution of amended site plan approval. Name of site plan, parking improvements for Taylor Ray Corp. Name of applicant, Taylor Ray Corp. Location, 1559 Route 82. Resolution offered by Planning Board member, John Eichman. Whereas the applicant has applied for amended site plan approval to construct a satellite parking area with 14 spaces to serve the expansion of a dental office with an additional four chairs proposed in Building 2, and whereas the Planning Board granted site plan approval on February 20th, 2007, and whereas the action is considered an unlisted action under SEAKER for which a coordinated review is not undertaken, and whereas the Planning Board adopted a negative declaration on April 16th, 2019, and whereas the applicant has now submitted an amended site plan, and the Board finds that the application meets the town requirements for amended site plan approval, subject to the conditions set forth below. Now therefore be it resolved that the Planning Board hereby issues amended site plan approval for the above project as represented on the map entitled Taylor Ray Corp. Parking Improvement Prepared by Brian Stokosa of M.A. Day Engineering PC, dated September 25th, 2018, and revised through February 27th, 2019. And be it further resolved that this approval is subject to the following conditions, which must be completed before the plan is signed by the Planning Board Chair. Number one, the landscaping plan must be approved by the town planner. Number two, all other aspects of the original approval must be complied with. Be it further resolved that within five business-
Sorry, any other ads that? We do not. Okay. Okay. Ouch. Okay, so I mean, I think we've all been agreed that there was a neg deck for this, but we just don't have the paper, correct? Well?
Can we read the resolution into the minutes with the condition that the neg deck, it will not be effective until the neg deck is signed?
I'll check tomorrow, but I think we can do that.
Okay.
I'm just thinking if we read it into the minutes as is, then it avoids having to come back and read it again.
Let me do the following, yeah. If, can I have somebody offer a resolution that says that this does not have any negative impacts on the environment? That this site plan adjustment does not have an impact? Motion?
Sure.
Second. And I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we're essentially agreeing with the concept that it is-
But we got to see the, you know-
Lacking a piece of paper.
Condition all the paperwork shows up.
Well, because-
So we'll add that as a condition number three.
The neg deck is dated from 1620.
Satisfactory. Very good catch, Pam. Neg deck.
Without the paper.
Right.
Is drafted and added. Okay.
So condition three is a negative declaration is drafted.
And adopt, and added.
Submitted.
Okay. Continue on. Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the Chair or other duly authorized member of the Planning Board shall cause a copy of this resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, votes are as follows. John?
Aye.
Craig?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
My vote is aye, your motion carries.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay. Next item. Public hearing for Taylor Ray. Pam, we have- I'm sorry, for-
Thank you.
For Villa Negrelli, sorry. We have all the materials that we require to open the public hearing. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The public hearing has been opened. Brian, why don't you start by telling us about the project?
This is an existing restaurant. It's on intersection of Teconic State Parkway and Carpenter Road. It's on the northbound side of the Teconic. Restaurant's existed for a couple of years. It's used to be the old Mascots Restaurant, now it's the Villa Negrelli Restaurant. They did a renovation on it not too long ago. Great restaurant, everybody should go there, great food. They want to, the business has been going so well that they'd like to expand into the second floor of the building. And with that, we would have to come back obviously for site plan approval. It involves Health Department making sure we meet the requirements for water and sewer. So we've had a couple of meetings with the town consultants, and obviously we've been in front of the Board now that we're here for a public hearing. But with that increased use on the second floor, we had to take a look at parking on-site. Majority of the site is occupied by the existing parking lot. Toward the east side, there's a gravelled parking lot area. That's kind of a free-for-all right now as far as parking goes. The intent of this amended site plan is to delineate the parking without too much effort. The applicant would like to keep the gravel parking lot gravel currently to save on some costs of redoing this application or this project. The gravel parking lot will be delineated by concrete bumper blocks. And then what we propose to do with the existing asphalt is to seal coat it and then re-stripe it. And we've tweaked the internal layout slightly to provide some additional handicap spaces to meet the increased seat count associated with the second floor. We've provided more of a walkway along the delivery door entrance, which is on the side of the building. The main entrance is on the front across from Carpenter Road. So we'll have an access way for people to come out from the parking lot into the walkway and then around front to the front of the building. We met with the Board of Health briefly, had a discussion with them a while back on how to analyze septic. We've pulled operational reports for water usage out there, and the usage is substantially less than what the system is approved for. So we have some, we have the ability to expand the system. We have some concepts in mind to do that as painlessly as possible. I hope to have a meeting with them later this week to finalize. So they are an involved agency. The other involved agency is Dutchess County Department of Public Works. And I had an opportunity to meet with them yesterday to discuss the entrances. And in speaking about the entrances, I met with Bill Trifilo. It's a rural road. There's no curbing along this section of the county road. So what we discussed in the field was keeping the entrance rural. That means no curbing. A large majority of the existing frontage along Carpenter Road is paved, and it actually dumps into the parking lot area. So he was willing to work with us as far as radiuses go on the entrance to the site. That means we would delineate the entrance with saw cutting some existing pavement and then also adding some pavement and doing some striping. If you look at the geometry of this, the way it kind of works out best is there's a utility pole right here. That's actually, there's pavement around it, and there's a mailbox next to it. So what we discussed is having a one-way access here. You come in around, and this, the exit toward the Teconic will be a double, in and out, two-way traffic. Whether this is access in or out has yet to be determined, but we, I think through conversations with Mr. Ellis here and the Board and some of the consultants, this layout is probably best suited for this application. It's almost like what we have there on-site right now, although flipped and opposite. We have one-way access out on this side, and it's almost two-way access in before the telephone pole. So it kind of separates the entrances a little bit, but still provides for the same traffic flow circulation. So the way it was left with Dutchess County Department of Public Works is, get us a sketch, get us an application, we're going to work with you. And I don't foresee any issues with them not accepting this layout since this is actually forcing some kind of channelization versus just a wide-open entrance. I think right now the entrance is probably, I think we paced it off over 100 feet in length of just a sea of asphalt coming in. So what this will do is channelize it and kind of corral the traffic coming in and out.
I remember for decades under previous owners, it was, it was the Wild, Wild West. It was just basically spontaneous parking.
Yeah, yep. And I think, I think with this layout, we'll better direct traffic in and out of the site. With this aspect, just going over the parking, we're going to have obviously parking here in the gravelled area delineated by concrete bumper blocks. In the back, we're going to have valet-style parking, they'll be stacked. This will be employee-only parking. It'll be signage stating that. And then we have our dumpster location here, so access to the dumpster from the, from where it carrying will be relatively easy. Since a large majority of this site is going to be occupied by parking, there's an area in the back here that we can, and it's been labeled as such for overflow parking if we have some bigger events like holidays, that kind of thing. And if we have any large-scale snowstorms, the applicant has the ability to push the snow toward this back gravelled area. Other than that, I think it's a relatively minor application. We have some billing department issues that we have to work out with, which involves standard ADA access to the second floor. The billing department's gone through and given us a hit list of items to look at. From a procedural standpoint, we wanted to get a feel-good from the Board on, you know, if this is a viable project, and also, you know, with the involved agencies being Health Department and Dutchess County Department of Public Works, it seems like we're at that point where we have a pretty good feel-good. So the next step is, once we're, you know, done with this board, we would obviously initiate an engineering review of the second floor. So we are aware of that, and it's forthcoming.
And it's 750 square foot addition?
Plus or minus, that's what we estimate for patron area.
And it meets the parking requirements?
We're three or four spaces over. The required amount.
Okay. Let me just pause, comments from the, or questions from the board members?
I knew there was a discussion about a third handicap spot. I don't see it on here, is there one planned?
Yeah, what we did is, since we screwed this entrance around, reconfigured it with this double access, we provided some additional parking up in the front here.
I see the two handicap spots, is that one next to it?
Yeah, what we have is-
Tended to be a third?
Yeah, we're going to put more space into here, so we'll have handicap all along this front stretch here. So yeah, we'll, we have, we're over our parking requirement right now, so we'll have the ability to put an extra space right here.
Okay, yeah, okay, good.
Any idea how you're going to provide ADA access to the second floor? Is that just, is that a to be determined?
To be determined, we'll look at it. The site right now is impervious in that area. There is some existing building that we could modify if we had to, but we haven't taken the full engineering analysis yet to that level.
Okay.
We'll obviously address it, and it's obviously going to have to conform for us to use that space.
It's beautiful inside, so it's construction, but okay. Any other questions or comments from?
Brian, as far as the fire advisory board, have they had the opportunity to look at the circulation?
I believe they, it was submitted to them, I'm not sure if we had any comments back from them.
I don't recall it.
I don't remember hearing anything. From a circulation standpoint, we meet all of the aisle widths requirements. We're 24 feet from edge to edge on parking stalls. We ran a truck radius through there for garbage and deliveries. It met the, it met the turning radius requirements. I would assume that the, the site as it's configured right now is not changing much as far as access into the site. We don't have curbing inside. This is all going to be striped, and it's all going to be level. So as far as maneuverability, there's access to all three sides of the building. I mean typically when, if there was a fire to break out, they're going to probably stage along Carpenter Road or toward the back of the gravel area and stretch a hose to the building. Along the Teconic side, it's a fairly flat grassed area, so they have the ability to, if there was fire, to hit it from all sides.
I think that most of the professionals' comments were pretty, but again, I think, David, you had the remaining-
Yes, I must commend Brian, this is a significant improvement. At least the alternative shown is a significant improvement over the initial, the initial submission. I just have a couple of questions. The turning radius diagrams, are those available to us?
Yes, a couple forward.
Thank you. And concerning the striping, I understand, you know, you're trying to keep everything level so that maneuverability is maintained. However, at the entrance, any chance of that striped area, the one separating the two driveways, any chance that that could be landscape? As to, you know, it gives a positive deterrent for people to either park or drive, drive over it.
Right, I think, I think we would have the ability to saw cut that area where there's existing pavement through some low-growth vegetation in there so we don't lose any sight distance looking left or right exiting the premise. Yeah, I think anytime we can remove asphalt that we don't need and add some green space, would, does it benefit to the project?
Okay.
I think the question was earlier concerning parking, you are, you are in conformance.
Okay, great, thank you. At this time, I'd like to ask the public to weigh in. I would ask that anyone who wishes to speak for or against the proposal for Villa Negrelli, please sign in.
Come to the podium.
I'm sorry?
You want them coming to the podium?
Yes, before you come to the, I will call you up. And please state, start by stating your name.
Yeah, good evening. My name is Peter Barton, I actually own Barton Orchards. So 55 Appletree Lane is my residence. I do not live in the town of East Fishco, but of course, over the years, the town of Beekman, East Fishco have worked hand-in-hand. The reason why I speak in favor of this project tonight is, of course, my business attracts a lot of people from down south. And the Teconic is really the main access that most of the people do travel. So when they leave my establishment, as much as I try to push them into my town, of course, as being a local business, a lot of them are going back south on the Teconic. And the restaurant, since it's been developed, has been a very positive influence on, and I've gone no wrong advertising for my customers that go to the villa. What I understand is that if the upstairs floor is there, a party of like 15, maybe 20 people could be pushed upstairs. And that would leave more of the, you know, openness downstairs. Probably most of my customers are probably, maybe a couple cars, so maybe eight people at the most. I don't think they would be using the upstairs. But this would allow the downstairs to be open for them. And so I just, you know, unfortunately, like I said, in my town, I don't have enough options. And this is just such an incredible restaurant. And somebody coming from New York City that has a really good palate and has everything at their disposal will visit this establishment and a year later tell me that I did not stand wrong and I had a great time. So it really reflects on me too. So I'd just like to add that, that this is a very big alternative for me to offer.
It's a pleasure meeting you, thank you.
Oh, thank you, everybody. I appreciate it.
You have a great business too. I'm sorry, then, okay.
Good evening. My name is Bob Yeremko. I live on 29 Acacia Drive, just off of Bike and Hill Road. I can walk to Villa Negrelli, I often do. I've been there for about 18 years. We enjoyed Mascot, it was like the Old West trying to park in there, and it was a fun place. When the Negrellis took over, we all were wondering what was going to happen, and what a beautiful family they are, and they moved into our neighborhood. The food is tremendous, and you know, I walk down, we drive down, we, you know, two times a day, my family's down there. I've got three daughters, and I would love to see them maybe have their baby showers and things like that in the restaurant. So I'm all support for the restaurant. You know, the Teconic kind of separates that side of the town. And it's one of the few restaurants that, well, that, in that area, that we can really enjoy and call part of our neighborhood. It really ties a lot of us together, so, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Okay. Based on what I heard, I, I didn't hear anything that makes me think we shouldn't close the public hearing. Is there?
No, I think we've got a couple of conditions that we got to consider and close up, but I don't think there's anything significant that should prevent us from closing the public hearing.
Right.
So could I have a motion, please?
So I'll move that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The public hearing is closed. Thank you for the commentary. David, you want to come back in and we'll?
I didn't want to block that.
Yeah, I appreciate that, I was going to say, where did David go? But thank you. So again, you're obviously working with the Board of Health, and so that, that's your private roto. But what I would ask is, is we, I'd like to put you on for decision at the next meeting, but with the agreement that you guys could work together and come up with the amicable arrangement on what you guys-
I think we're in agreement, I've made it clear what my preference is.
Okay.
Yep, I think what we'll do is, we'll have our meeting with the Board of Health, we'll work through that issue, and then we're going to submit, based upon the input tonight, of the, of the one-way access, whether it's in or out, located on the east of the double access toward the Teconic. And we'll just make it a contingent, if we could be on the next meeting for decision, that would be great.
Okay.
It would give me some time to finalize with the Board of Health and, you know-
We always offer, we can meet in two weeks if you think you'd be, if that would help your program.
If, if we can make, if we can make everything contingent upon, we could do that. I don't know if I'm going to have Board of Health in hand in two weeks, but if we could make it a contingent item, I don't see why we couldn't move forward.
Condition that, I mean, preference of the Board, anybody gathered for?
Just from a practical point, do we have any other things in line for next month?
No.
There's nothing on that?
Nothing on May.
On the, I'm sorry, I actually have the date, so why don't I?
It'll be May the 1st.
It would be, yes, the May 21st meeting has nothing on it. So there's really nothing that would prevent us from trying to pull this into May 1st.
May.
To May 7th.
I'm sorry, May 7th, okay. I'm glad one of us is paying attention, thank you.
Yeah, if we got nothing, let's do it on the 7th instead of the 21st.
You think by that meeting you'd have unnecessarily the permit, but at least some, some form of agreement with Dutchess County? It seems simple enough.
Yeah, I could probably get some kind of, maybe an email response in favor of it, subject to submission of a permit. But I could probably get, definitely, definitely get some kind of okay on the entrance location and configuration.
Okay. All right, Pam.
So we're going to hold a special meeting on May 1st?
Uh, May 7th. May 7th, we, yes, that has always been our policy. It's actually, we, again, we used to meet every two weeks.
But when we, when we set the meeting dates up,
Right.
we didn't schedule for that, but we didn't-
Is there any reason from a logistic, okay. Given the fact that the 21st is empty, 7th, I mean, and helps a business that's expanding in the town, so.
Just from a notification point of view, is announcing it tonight sufficient?
No, I have to put a legal notice in the paper as well.
Okay.
Can we do this, I mean, am I?
You're probably stepping over your bounds.
I'm sure, I, which by the way, I live over my bounds, so it's not just a step.
I think that's what we love about you, Michael.
I can't see my bounds when I turn around.
Yeah, if we can give proper notification to hold it on the 7th instead of the 21st.
Then I would like to do it, so do I have a motion to meet on the 7th?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Okay.
Right, and if contingent, if we can't do it, we'll just default to the 21st.
Uh, yes, I would ask that we give at least like a week's notice that, you know, we have a go, no-go on that.
When do you have to put the notice in the paper? So that we'd want to, we'd want that in advance of?
Before, but the agenda, and the agenda goes up a week before.
Okay, so if we can get it eight to 10?
Have a week. It's tight, but we'll see if we can do it. We appreciate it. We appreciate the effort.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay. I'm waiting for everybody, okay, we get, we have one more item on the agenda and that is the referral from the town board. Let me just, I'd like to kinda start by giving everybody a little background on what this is. Again, this is the creation of a new zoning entity that is a, a, it's, it's a, an entity that can be invoked with a special permit. And again, this is a referral from the town board to us to comment on this. So basically what this is, is I would ask, as we think about this, that you think about the niche that it's trying to hit. That is, you know, there are nursing homes and, and homes for the elderly. There's also apartmental living and those kinda things. This is kind of an intermediate niche, that is, the key attributes that describe it are that it's for just residents who are fifty-five and older. The minimum rental is gonna be a year. It has to be located within the, the town itself.
Within the hamlet?
And it's defined within the hamlet, yes, thank you, that's a better way of describing it. Within the village confines was the way, and then it has to be on a state or county road. And so those are the things that kind of limit it. And, and again, the quality that we're looking for is described as being, you know, again, it has to maintain the aesthetic appeal. There's also limitations of no more than thirty percent coverage by buildings. It has to have central water and sewer and there's a density level set for this, you know, being ten apartments or fewer per acre. And so, you know, that, it very much defines this thing where you're basically having independent living, but with very tight controls about the residents and, and the, the structure of the community. So, the feedback that we have provided so far, and again, we're coming due on having to supply this, is that the points that we raised were, what are the other properties that this could potentially be applicable to? Because again, I probably should have prefaced this by saying this was being done at the behest of the, the group that's doing out at Joe's Mother's Road. So the question was, okay, if that's in scope, what other properties would this be applicable to? The other questions we raised were, given the fact that it's within the town con, or the village confines, the pedestrian safety, safety and the incorporation of the use of, of some of the existing consequential buildings there, that is, there's a, you know, it's not necessarily historic, but there's an older or graceful home on the property that should be incorporated into this. And then also, given the fact that these are, you know, an older community who they have a much lower impact on schools. But what were the other, their impacts on the other services such as fire and police? As well as, we also suggested that they, they maintain very flexible parking requirements. So those are the monarch notes for, for this proposal. Let me just kinda open it up and just say, are there other comments that we wish to include in our referral back to the town board?
I'm just curious, Michael, does this process include an opportunity for the public to comment as well?
At the, at the town board meetings, yes.
At the town board, okay.
Yes.
I have no other comments.
And there's, there's comments on density and things like that, but is there any minimum lot size for this? Cause once you have that number of acres, there's criteria to say, you know, no more than thirty percent and, you know, ten apartments per acre, but is there a minimum size?
There may have been, I.
I didn't see it in.
Okay, I.
You know, just so they don't put up a small, little, eight, eight apartments building, you know.
Okay, very good point.
Cause I think the intent is to have, you know, some units that are a little bit larger in size.
And the intent is to have a community and that, that goes to that.
One, one point, Michael, does the document get into the availability of public transportation? Or the available of, yeah, public transportation?
That's a very good point, too.
I know there's already a bus stop on, on Palen Road near the intersection of eighty-two, which would be right around the corner from there.
If it's gonna be a zoning adoption, criteria should be the availability of public transportation.
Right.
Incorporate public transportation into the, into the site plan, very good.
And I, and I think the village confines idea is trying to capture that, but we can be more specific on it.
Good one. Other comments? Okay, this is coming due so that what I would ask is by, by end of the business day tomorrow, I will circulate an email to all the members and just give the, the text that I've put to the two new suggested ones and then people can feel free to comment on that, but, and/or add additional comments so that we can, we can wrap this up and send it back.
So what to do here is just to comment back to the, the town board?
Uh, yes, to be included, well, include the comments that are being rolled together for the town.
Okay.
Okay, any other comments on that before we? Okay. That's, that's our agenda for this evening. I appreciate, I appreciate you guys being willing to meet on a irregular schedule to help out business in the town. With that, do we have a, any other closing comments or points that people wanna make?
Now we wanna recognize a student, we have.
Oh, we have a student, okay.
Yeah, we have a student.
Here we go. Okay. I think you lucked out tonight. Cause normally, I, I think we're gonna make you stay an hour anyway, it's just as punishment, you know?
Hopefully you brought a book.
Thanks for, thanks for comments.
You study hard and you don't wind up on a planning board somewhere, so. Do we have, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Absolutely.
Second.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.